Yes, with the MDC Metropolitan District Commission meeting of March 6th, 2023, please come to order with the clerk, please read the roll.
DeBella.
Here.
Adel Anderson.
Here.
Avedision.
Here.
Bazano.
Here.
Buell.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Curry.
Here.
Desai.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Gardo.
Here.
Gentile.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Hoheb.
Here.
Holloway.
Here.
Lechance.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Magnan.
Here.
Mandike.
Here.
Maniscalco. Hayne.
Here.
Patel.
Here.
Potowski. Salemi.
Here.
Stuber. Taylor.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Wolf. Carrier. We have a quorum.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands in commandment under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, minutes, approval of the minutes of February 13th, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are there any additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public comments relative to agenda items? Report from the district chairman, the chief executive officer is gonna, he's got a long night tonight.
No.
No?
Basketball game at 6:30.
6:30, okay. Report from the executive, chief executive officer.
Thank you very much, Scott.
We're gonna get into the issue.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, Scott's gonna raise much of what's been going on with DEEP, very interesting.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, so I have five issues to talk about tonight. I'm gonna try and be really brief because I know Mr. Stone needs to get out of here for seven o'clock. So, we've been talking a lot about the integrated plan, we've been talking a lot about DEEP, the North End, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Holloway, our chairman, ourselves, we've been, Chris Stone, we've all been involved in this issue regarding flooding. We've been talking and having a lot of good discussions with the city, with DEEP and with EPA. EPA and DEEP, both are being very supportive of trying to find a solution to a problem that involves more than just the MDC. So, we're dealing with street flooding, we're dealing with climate change, we're dealing with our consent order, consent decree. And so, they have, I've met with them at least three times in the last month, and the first question we asked them was, and we've been, the city's asked the same question, is it feasible, is it possible for the MDC to utilize clean water funding to dredge the north branch of the Park River? The answer to the city of Hartford, the answer to the MDC has been no, up until I had a meeting on Friday, this past Friday, and I got an email from DEEP on Sunday that says it is possible. Now, that's a good thing, right? We don't know and pretend to know how much grant money, so in most of the work that we do in Hartford, the grant portion is usually forty-five to fifty, forty-eight, fifty percent. And when you're doing private property work, sometimes it's much less, like twenty percent. They have couched it to say that the Clean Water Project is not the viable solution to dredge a river, it's a flood control issue, however, if we can, if we can present this and prove that it's a water quality issue for the north branch of the Park River, they may be able to bend the rules, so to speak. No guarantees, but we don't know how much grant money would be available. They also identified the fact that there's two and a half million dollars of grant money for doing private property work, so we're talking about replacing laterals and all those good things. I've mentioned in the past, we're gonna bring to BPW in April, a new ordinance that is specific to the INI reduction, which is part of our consent decree. Presently, the only thing we have is the backwater valve program, which will continue to execute about $2 million this year. But we're also proposing that we would rod a lateral on someone's property that might be clogged with a root, presently under ordinance, that is a private property issue, and MDC is not, we're not allowed to go on private property, so we would need an ordinance change for that. We're also gonna propose that we would replace laterals for free, under the Clean Water Project Integrated Plan, for all of our towns, all eight towns, not just Hartford. And, and that would be a positive thing, both under emergency and under a planned activity. We also are planning that presently, when we line a prod, when we line a sewer main, under our C-MOM Integrated Plan, we line the main, and we line up to the proppant line, so about three to five, six feet, depending on the proppant line, but we do that as part of the Clean Water Project. We're not allowed to do on private property. With these changes, and with a new ordinance change, we would propose, we're gonna line the, every lateral. So, when we line the main, we line the lateral too. So, for example, in the North End, Blue Hills, Granby area, we've lined about six, seven streets in that area. We're proposing, short term, that we could go back essentially tomorrow and start lining those laterals, right? So, one thing DEEP and EPA has said to us is, what can you do today? What can you start to do today? And obviously, the separation work in the Blue Hills, Granby area requires a drainage study, there's a lot of work to do. So, the engineering has to, has to be completed. But the things that we can do are, we're gonna line every lateral as part of our normal protocol, we're gonna replace laterals and rod the lateral if it's required, and we're going to look at short-term separation projects that we can do, that do not require a drainage study. So, in Blue Hills, Granby area, most likely, there's no work we can do there without doing that drainage study, because the drainage study determines, it talks about a lot of details about the hydraulics of where the lateral is in the street versus the home, you know, the gravity drainage, there's a lot of things that have to be figured out. So, we don't want to do something in a home in that area that would get ripped out later, right? But, in areas like Gully Brook, which has to be separated as well, those were priorities, second priorities. So, the first priority was the north branch of the Park River by DEEP, and then the second areas were like the Gully Brook areas and North Main Street. So, we're proposing to take some of the projects that were not under Phase One and move them up into Phase One. DEEP is at the point, and I, I'm not gonna guarantee this, but the new staff at DEEP, the new staff at DEEP agree that separation is the best solution for a long-term problem in our, in any city. We've even talked about the fact of building tunnels do not solve the problem. Building tunnels means you just bring a tunnel close enough to the overflows, as we presented in the south tunnel, you just bring the tunnel as close as you can to the overflow and pick up the overflow. You're not addressing the, the, the overflows in basements or in streets with a tunnel. So, DEEP agrees with that, EPA agrees with that. So, we're gonna look at providing solutions to, that we think, MDC staff think is the best. We, the process would be, we're gonna get a letter from DEEP and from EPA saying, tell us what you think you can do quickly, and, and what's the best thing. We're gonna respond to that. Once they agree that, okay, we're gonna modify your consent order and your integrated plan to change the schedule of certain projects, like the North Main Street and like Gully Brook areas, then we will get that, bring that back to the board, BPW and the board. The board's gonna have to approve that because it's a change. There may be projects that, one was a priority, like for example, on Franklin Avenue, there was priority projects that have to be done now, but if we can push those and do north, north of Hartford first, then we're gonna propose that, and then the board can decide if you want to do that, and we'll have to change the funding allocations that you've approved in the budget, this project first, the prioritization of the projects. And then we can move forward. The good news is, we have told DEEP, and I just talked to DEEP today, that we have three on-call contractors that could actually start working tomorrow, and I, when I say tomorrow, I mean, there's a lot of planning to happen, but we could start this summer, doing things that would be beneficial to the community, that we could use our on-call contractors for. The DEEP's gonna have to change the way that they process the bureaucratic component of approving these kinds of contracts, because typically, you design it, then you submit the design to DEEP, they approve it, and then you move forward with a, with a IFO, PFO loan agreement. We're proposing to use our on-call agreements for some of these types of projects. We're just trying to find innovative ways where we can actually start doing some good under the Integrated Plan. So, that's all positive, like I said, two and a half million dollars of, of private property grant money that DEEP has committed to, it's for, over a three-year period, it's not just for the MDC, but who's ever out of the box first will probably, will be more likely to receive the majority of that. That'll help compensate our eight-member towns for, for spending money on private property. The one thing we're gonna need, though, is we're gonna need the support of the 29 members, right? Because, because DEEP can tell us, yes, you can use clean water funding to dredge the river, but the, the, the twenty, the other seven towns have got to understand that they have to support that, it's not just DEEP telling us we can do it. The board has to tell us we can do it.
Majority.
The majority, right?
All right.
Thank you. So, so, but there's a, this is positive, I mean, I would tell you, in the last month, I do believe, with all the support we've gotten from our commissioners in Hartford, and Janice Fleming, and, and our legislators, and Chris Stone, and our chairman, we do have an understanding from the regulators that they set the priority, right? They are the ones that set the priority, really starting in 2004. You're gonna do XYZ, and we had to execute that. I think they recognize that their protection of the rivers, the Connecticut River, the north branch of the Park River, the Weathersfield Cove, is a priority, but maybe we didn't consider, they didn't consider, the priority of the communities that are being affected by the flooding and the backups. So, they've been extremely supportive, we're very hopeful that there's a lot of good things that can happen. So, over the next couple of months, we're gonna need support from the, from the commission, and we'll keep you updated.
Yeah, also, I, I think we want to explain the issue that there's gonna be outreach also on backflow.
Yes.
Backflow piping.
Yeah.
And things of that nature, so that we reach out proactively to the community to look at whether they're functioning properly, giving them instructions, and encouraging people to make sure that we promote the utilization of the backflow.
Yeah, so, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so, we met on the 22nd here in this room with a number of key, it was not a public meeting, and it was a group of key stakeholders, the NRZ's leaders in the North End, Blue Hills, Civic, the West End, and it was really to talk about the public meeting that we need to have under the consent order in April. And it was really, the reason why we met with this group was because we need to go, our priority is the North End, but we need to do that first. There's a, there's a drainage study that's gonna be, quote, theoretically eighteen months, so there's a lot of work before we can even start designing the separation in that area. So, we needed to understand from them what the message should be. So, we presented the same presentation, except with some changes that we had from Commissioner Lewis and Janice Fleming, I always call Commissioner Fleming, but you're always Commissioner. So, we had some input to say, we made some changes, we did make those changes. In that meeting, there was a lot more suggestions about simplifying the message and changing, getting rid of the technical pieces, and talking about the problems first. One of the discussions we had was from Mr. Jorgensen from Scarborough, and mentioned the fact that they had, the city has already cut down a number of trees in the north branch of the Park River, which really benefited his area. So, we're learning from the community, we want to really refine our message. The next step, as the chairman said, is we're gonna go into and have a public meeting within the Blue Hills, Granby area, West End group will be invited as well, and we want to have that same discussion about what we need to do and when we need to do it. In, in preparation for the April public meeting, which will be for everyone, to talk, to talk to everyone about the Integrated Plan as a whole. So, that is, that is where we are headed with, with our outreach. We just, as, as some of you may know, we just had a Community Affairs Committee meeting and established a new chairman, you want to talk about their involvement in the outreach?
Sure, go ahead.
So, our, our expectation is, we have, we have, we have a chairman.
Diane Lewis.
Did she go? Did she just step down?
She knew you were gonna talk about her, so.
So, we have, not only do we have a chairman from the MDC, but she also lives in the same community, right? And, and Janice Fleming has been instrumental in giving me advice as to what is the message, and Janice Fleming.
And a new vice chair person.
And a new vice chair.
Gene Holloway. Gene Holloway.
Gene Holloway.
Both living in the community.
I can never forget you, and both, all three of these, I want to say powerful women, because they're powerful women in the community, can help us not step on landmines, right? We want to, we want our technical message to be received so that we can actually execute the work as quickly as possible. So, I'm relying on not just our chairman and these three commissioners, but the Community Affairs Committee as a whole, to help guide us and make sure that we can communicate this message, which is so important, because as we've said before, it's, I truly believe now that DEEP and EPA finally recognize that, that what we were doing, and the, how we were driven by regulation, was really more focused on water quality and environmental concerns and the sound than in Hartford. So, we are heading, I believe, in the right direction, and hopefully, we will, we will be able to start some work in the northern part of the city this coming summer. So, we're gonna work, we're gonna bring this back to BPW, Commissioner Hoffman, and you'll have some details about what we're doing, what we're changing, what we need the board to approve. DEEP will have to obviously amend the schedules, amend the priorities that have already been set. We'll need new allocations of funding, we're gonna not ask for more, we'll be saying, here's a project that we're gonna put on hold because of the priorities have changed, we're not gonna do this, we're gonna do this. And, and we will be bringing back new INI ordinances, specifically, I N I, we say inflow and infiltration. So, inflow is water being pumped into our system from anybody, could be Weathersfield, could be Newington, could be West Hartford, it could be Hartford. Infiltration is water leaking into our leaky pipe, that's our responsibility, right? It could also be leaking in from the lateral, and that's why we want to line the lateral, replace the lateral. So, a lot of good things happening, there'll be more to come.
It's not just happening in Hartford, it's gonna happen in all the towns.
All towns.
That are having those problems, and it's, it's a much broader capability for the MDC now to do things that we were restricted from doing under DEEP's regulations and EPA's regulations. So, I think it, that meeting that happened in North Main Street was very effective because it brought everybody together under one tent. Senator Blumenthal was there, EPA was there, DEEP Commissioner was there. There was a focus, and they left that meeting and went back and worked together, and that's the fruits of what was reflected at that meeting. It was really, since I've been around in this clean water project in the district, I haven't seen that kind of a coordinated effort come together and really be functional. And this was functional, all the way up to the top of EPA. So, it's, it's a very positive impact now that we'll have. And again, like I said, it's not just Hartford, we're dealing in West Hartford, Blue, Weathersfield, and Newington that have a similar problem with drainage getting into our sewers, which is a restriction of not only our ordinances, their ordinances, and the state DEP ordinances. So, it's, it's a positive for everybody in, in terms of where we're going. And I've got to commend the staff on just being real aggressive in terms of dealing in this process and coming back again and again. Scott, you did a good, a great job, and the staff did an outstanding job. Are there any questions?
I.
Oh, go ahead.
Nope.
We almost got out of that one.
I know, I got two more.
Okay, two more. Well, can we stay on this?
Yes, that's fine.
Or is it part of the same?
Sure.
Is it new?
It's new.
It's separate, okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Are there any questions relative to where we just went? Yes, Commissioner?
Yeah, I spoke to one of the commissioners of the Flood Commission in Hartford, and regarding the, the trees, I asked him the same question about cutting the trees that, that were creating a problem, I guess, flooding the University of Hartford's parking lot and that sort of thing, and he said that in fact, they weren't cut down, that they were, what happened was that, that a number of trees had actually fallen.
Yes.
And created a dam situation, and was backing up the water.
Right.
And I'm wondering, you know, and I've always felt that, you know, we should have a mantra, you know, mitigate and, and, and then fix whatever comes afterwards, so that, I, I don't know if, we've had the opportunity to look at the possibility of the same thing happening in other areas along that north Park River, where there may be trees and whatnot that are actually slowing the water down or creating a backup that then contributes to the, to the additional flooding. So, I just throwing that out there, because I don't know if we've, if we've actually done that, I don't know.
Well, there is, what was the number of trees? The city has taken.
Hundred thousand.
No, how many trees did they cut?
Yeah, I don't know the trees, but they spent about a hundred thousand dollars in the Scarborough Street area, removing trees, so Commissioner, you're right, it's not so much the, the living tree that's the problem, it's the living tree that turns into a dead tree that falls in and creates a damming. So, the damming aspect of the trees in the river is the problem, and I don't pretend to know the details, except the number, they spent about a hundred thousand dollars removing trees, whether it's dead or falling trees in that area, but you're right, the, the trees that fall are really the problem, because they're the ones that are creating that water slowing down, it's, it's gathering debris, it's gathering garbage, it's slowing the water down so that the, the sediment in the river, you know, falls to the bottom, and then it's creating, you know, it's rising the, the bed level in the river.
We can't access it.
Which is creating a volume issue, and it's creating a flooding issue, so I, we agree with you a hundred percent.
Have we surveyed that, or can we survey?
No, but it will be part of the, the management stud, ah, it will be part of the, thank you.
The study, it's part of the drainage study.
Yeah, part of the drainage study.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that, you know, we know these storms are coming.
Yes.
And these things, you know, are gonna take time, and there are some things we can do beforehand, you know, and again, I'm saying, you know, mitigate and remediate. If, you know, if there are small things that we can do to at least, you know, those smaller storms, if we can do things that mitigate that, you know, which is within our own, you know, capabilities, then let's see if we can do some of those things also, because these other things will take time.
Sure.
You know, they all do, but there are things that perhaps we can do to begin to, you know, reduce that amount of flooding. And then the other, the other part is, you know, yeah, if the flooding will occur, then what can we do? You know, I don't know, either MDC, in collaboration with the city of Hartford, to, to begin to remediate what, the damage which is done to the, to the area, to the, to the, to the basements and that sort of thing, because we are doing some mitigation, you know, with the, with the valves, with the backflow valves and that sort of thing, that's part of that.
Sure.
So, I'm thinking, you know, I know we're thinking big, but there are a lot of little things that can be done, and I'm saying, let's see if we can do some, because they're not all gonna be hundred-year storms.
Right. Yeah.
So, if we can control some of the smaller ones, that's gonna go a long way, you know, to helping deal with the flooding in that, in that area.
Well, a significant, Commissioner, a significant part of the small things that really aren't small was this cleaning of the streets in Hartford, and, and the catch basins being opened up was significant, and that was something that took us a couple of years of work between both the city and the MDC to, to get to that point. So, all that is part of the flood control issue and backups and everything else. But the river, Park River is a significant one, because it's, it's restricting the flow of the river, which increases the, and we, the, the, the river level, and we have separation going in there now that's backing up because it can't get into the river because of the change.
And so, there's been a lot of attention brought to this issue, right, over the last month and a half? And we have said, and we've been talking about this for a number of years, that, you know, DEEP's and EPA's consent order, consent decree are really specific. It's about protecting the waterways of the United States, was never about protecting people's basements, right? It, it's a side benefit to, to the protection of the waterways, but it's, it wasn't the, the goal, right? It's not, it's not the ultimate goal. What this has done, be careful what you wish for, right? So, what this has done is woken a lion, called the EPA, and what's gonna wind up happening is, they're gonna start to look at the stormwater that's in our system. They're starting to realize stormwater's the problem, and you're gonna start, I guarantee you, in the next couple of years, you're gonna start to see EPA coming down on our towns, not just our towns, but New Haven and Bridgeport, they're gonna start going after the stormwater. Where is it coming from? Like, it's, you know, MDC is not a stormwater company, or a sewer company, but where is all this stormwater coming from? And you're gonna start to see those regulatory actions occurring, not just at the MDC, but towns across New England, across the country, but, but for us, our eight-member towns, will be getting knocks on the door saying, hey, what are you doing about your MS4 program? What are you doing about stormwater mitigation? So, it's, it's a good thing, but it is, it is a regulatory issue that has not been addressed. MS4, I've said this a thousand times, was approved in 2015, and you've heard nothing about it. And we've been saying all along, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. So, I have two more issues, real quick, if there's no more questions.
Let's make sure, are there any other questions? Go ahead, Scott.
Okay. I'd just like to thank Commissioner Avedision, he's been a champ, he's been a champion of this, the Winter Olympics, out in Winter Games, out in Windsor, we've been doing this really since, since I've been here, 2006, we're probably doing it well before that. We're a sponsor of the Special Olympics, Winter Olympics in Windsor. We basically give free water so they can make snow for different types of snow events. I'd like to present that to the chairman, and we'll hang that in our, our.
We'll add it to our.
We'll add it to our trophy.
We received one before.
But it's, thank you, Commissioner.
This is the second one we've received.
Yes, we, we're, we've been, we've been a sponsor for, for years, so we really try to help as much as we can the Special Olympics. And then the last one, I, I'm not, I don't have a resolution, I just wanted to inform and make sure everyone's comfortable. Back in April of '22, I had mentioned at a, at the board meeting, that, that I was requested to meet with the group that was called XYZ Architecture in California, because they were doing a study on the airport.
Yeah.
And so, I, I mentioned the fact that I was meeting with them, I sat with them and talked to them about, you know, in general, you know, we have no involvement in the airport, but they wanted to understand our position, and my position was, we have no position, right? We're just, you know, we're. We're just, you know, we're a water company, we sell water, and we, you know, we are sewer system. And July 11th, the board took a resolution that said, we're not taking a position. So I haven't had any conversation with this group. I don't pretend to know how this group XYZ in California has now turned into BFJ out of New York. But they requested, I don't know, I have no idea, but they had a public hearing on February 13th, and I did not attend. They called me on the second and asked if I would be willing to talk to them about the finalization of the report. I have no idea what the report says. I just wanted to make sure that, given the fact that the resolution was passed, that the board is comfortable with me talking with this group. So I didn't, I don't need a resolution. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
I think we both met with them, wasn't...
On the April 25th, yes.
April 25th, yeah. They're coming back Wednesday. I believe it's the city study that was done.
It is the city study.
And it's the study that was laid out with options that could happen in the South Meadows. And I believe it's the California and the New York group is the same group that we met with before. It's just, again, they've published most of that, and I think they're coming back. I don't know why.
They had a public hearing on the 13th of February. I did not attend, so...
That's the one, that's the one they have. And they published that, I think, three or four months ago.
I don't know what we have to offer, except, you know, what we have for infrastructure in that area. And I don't know really what else we can offer, but I didn't want to meet with them without, you know, the board understanding, given the resolution that was passed.
Okay.
So...
But they're just asking for information. They're not asking for any position. Like Scott said, we have not taken a position on it. City of Hartford has. And again, they were the one that did this study. There's a second study that the legislature provided $1.5 million for in the last session of legislature, and I don't know where that is, but it's someplace, there's a $1.5 million for a different type of study that talks about environmental, all the other issues that involve apparently around doing anything in the South Meadows in general, not a specific issue. It's the environment, it's the, it's drainage and a whole bunch of other things down in that area that have always been contested amongst people. Further questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Patel?
We being the major landlord or property owner in that area, in my opinion, I don't see anything wrong, meeting with them, finding out what they are doing, and keep ourselves informed. Do you need any resolution from the board for that purpose?
No, they're not asking us.
I don't need a resolution. I clearly understand that the board does not have a position, and I'm not going to present any position. We just, you know, out of courtesy, I did speak with them in April. I just wanted to make sure, you know, I was transparent that we're, I've been asked to meet with this group or new group.
It's the same group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So they're basically asking you to, Commissioner Payne, they're basically asking you to review a plan that they want to present to you?
I don't think it's a...
They haven't asked me to review anything. They just asked to meet, to follow up. I haven't seen the plan. I haven't seen any recommendations. In our conversation that I had in April of '22, they basically talked about infrastructure, what's down there. They asked a question simply, what would you like to see there? And we said, we don't really care.
We didn't send them with...
It's not our decision, you know, what is down there. But we told them about the infrastructure and what's there. And, you know, there was a, there was some understanding that we possibly could move our plant, which is not possible. So, you know, made them understand that you, you know, if you had like a hundred billion dollars, we can move the plant.
Well, yeah, they basically wanted to know what we had down there and what we could move. Now, we have 15 acres down there that we have operations on that we could move, but we can't move the 59 acres we can't move. Everything is, there's billions of dollars of investment that has been, and we explained that to them. So I don't know, we don't know what their position is, but they've already announced, that's not a city position, by the way. It's just a study that they have material, and they're reviewing it now and having public hearings on it, so. Further questions?
I will report, if everyone's comfortable, I will definitely report back to BPW at the next BPW meeting and also at the next board meeting.
Commissioner Salimi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I don't have a problem with us talking to people. I mean, I think we should know what's going on there anyways. But so this BFJ, it's an architectural firm, a planning firm or something?
Planning firm, yes.
All right. So, and does this plan include, you know, that they're doing, do we know, does it include keeping the airport or getting rid of the airport? We don't know about that?
I don't know. I have no idea.
Well, I think, I think the issue was, for the City of Hartford, as far as I saw the study, it just talks about alternatives on that site down there. It doesn't select any of them. It's information that they are providing to the city, as much as I know. Jack, do you have any?
As you and, as you and Scott have said, you know, the question of moving the plant is kind of moving, we're not moving the beds. It's worth like $5 billion, and it'll cost like $100 billion to move it or something. We can't move it. But the point is, we need to be interested in who's moving in next door to us, because I don't want, you know, some future neighbor to say, gee, you know, we don't like your plant, you know, we need you to spend, you know, $200 million to do this and make it better or make it nicer for us or something. And that's the issue that we have, not just, you know, whether or not we can give up, you know, a few acres of land towards the development. The issue is, you know, we're going to have different neighbors if it's not going to be an airport. And, you know, we really can't do much about the plant being there. I mean, it's a sewage treatment plant, and it's always going to be a little bit of a nuisance, you know, if you're standing right next to it, there's just no way out of that. So that's really the interest, to find out, okay, well, what's, you know, what's going to be next door to us at some point, you know? And are we going to have to be, you know, in, at some point, in some adversarial relationship with them because of our operations, which we're already there? It's kind of where, you know, we've been there since 1940, so, you know. But that's my thing. I think you should talk to them. I think we should find out what's going on there. So with that in mind also, with them.
Jackie, do you have?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mann-Dyke. I believe what's happening here is the City of Hartford commissioned a study last year. That was the study that you originally went ahead and met with, and now just proposed alternatives. That study has been issued. This specific one now with BFG is a contract through DECD.
That's the hundred...
It is three separate areas that they are, not areas, but they are looking at three distinct pieces in regards to the planning. There's an environmental phase one and phase two. There is also what potentially could be there. There's economic development analysis. So this is the state, this is, Mr. Chairman, you are correct, this is the $1.5 million study that BFG is doing. The other one has been completed and has been submitted to the city.
Yeah, this is, this is part of the legislation they passed last year. And the criticism was that anything that was done before wasn't a broad enough, comprehensive enough to give the city enough knowledge in the general community as to what could and couldn't be done down there. So that's where it is. Further questions? If not, I'm...
That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Austin. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Thanks, Scott. I'm going to ask that, we've got several...
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Number Eight, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I almost went by the district council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report this evening.
We'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
We'll have a more thorough report in April. There are some things that are popping on a couple of fronts, the landfill front, which aren't ripe for discussion today, but will be hopefully in April. And also the tunnel claim, which we've been working on aggressively, and we'll be able to report on that as well. But any questions anyone might have?
Thank you.
Please feel free.
Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted the distinguished district council. Number nine, I'm going to ask that we have some changes here. What is it, John?
Item 11.
Item 11. That's the Water Bureau consideration of potential action regarding authorization for 145 North Road Rocky Hill to connect to the Cromwell Public Water System. This is because of gravity, we, on close areas, we go back and forth. And I guess, there's someone here, I think, that owns the property, so we're going to ask that we move it up to the beginning of the agenda, rather than have them sit around all night and listen to what we're talking about if they don't have time. So without objection, I would ask that we take up and the next item would be item 11. Is there objection?
No objection.
Okay, item 11. Water Bureau consideration of potential action regarding authorization for 145 North Road Rocky Hill to connect to Cromwell Public Water System. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
Still moved?
It's been moved.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
This was brought up by Water Bureau, and it was voted unanimously to approve 145 North Road Rocky Hill to connect the Cromwell Public Water System with the understanding that we weren't giving up our exclusive rights.
Right. Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, okay. Item nine, Personnel and Pension Committee consideration and potential action regarding, can we take these individually or together?
I think these should be taken up separately. They're all in a related...
Okay, okay. A, approval of tentative agreement with AFSCME Local 3713. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Jamie?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Jamie Harlow, Director of HR. We presented to the PP&amp;I Committee on February 27th the tentative agreements that we had reached with the Local 3713. It was approved at PP&amp;I unanimously, I believe. And again, this is after several months of negotiating with the Local 3713. The bulk of our kind of efforts in negotiating this year across our unions has been to streamline, standardize, really kind of clean things up and make things a little bit more consistent across the unions and the exempt and excluded groups. As you can imagine, when you have, you know, four different groups with very different benefits, it can be a little administratively cumbersome to administer some of the benefits and policies that we do have. So that was one of the primary efforts and is reflected in the tentative agreements. The other big part that we were really trying to focus on is to help contain costs, in some ways specifically related to the health care. I believe this is something that had been discussed years and years ago, but we did put forward discussions with the unions, all three unions. We had USI Consulting, who is our benefit consultant, come in and talk about the health care costs. Obviously, they're not going down. So the goal was to add a preventative care program, which all of the unions very much, you know, embrace the concept of. I do want to thank 3713. We spent a lot of time negotiating on this, along with the next agenda item. And, you know, it was a long process, but again, they were great in coming to the table and making things happen. I don't know if there are specific questions about the tentative agreements. I can address them. Yeah, sure.
So as you know, in 2015 through 2018, and even more recently with some of the other unions, our goal has been, as Jamie mentioned, to simplify the unions so that we have three unions with very similar administrative rules. But most importantly, that we're saving money by doing more with less. And so we have, since 2015, been developing multitasking job descriptions. We have taken 184 down from, how many jobs to?
3713 is down to 18 jobs. 184, I think, is...
This is the multitasking.
23, maybe?
Yeah, so in this, in this union, we had 58 job descriptions. We've converted them down to 18. And in 2015, we had roughly 100 and some odd job descriptions, and we've converted them down to 50 some odd job descriptions. So we're having one position do multiple jobs, which means we need less staff to do it. And I just, that's really the most important focus of this union negotiation, is creating multitasking, multitasking job descriptions.
Further discussion? If not, all, I'm sorry, Commissioner Patel?
When you assign positions in different departments in the budget, will you be specifying the same title and range? How would you determine which range they belong to?
So in our union negotiations in 2015 and just recently, we agreed, thank you, we agreed with the unions. We clumped, and it's in the resolution, we clumped jobs together. And I'll give you an example. We had construction inspectors in construction, and we had, in a sense, inspectors in utility services, doing different jobs, but the same task, right? In construction, they're overseeing laying of sewer main and water main in the streets. In utility services, they're inspecting sewer services and water services on private property. Same, same thing, right? Same task, same technology. So now we have one job description to serve two different departments. So that's the logic. Those salary ranges in this union is, they're outlined here. And in this union, we actually took all of the job descriptions and lowered all the pay grades by two pay grades, because in our discussion with the union, there was a study done in 2014 that identified that this union was about 26% over the market. So we, and we did the same thing with 184 and 1026. Those unions, 184 and 1026, were much lower than 26. They were like 10% and 12% over the market. So in our negotiations, we agreed to reduce all of the pay grades for these new jobs. Our employees will not, our existing employees will not be affected. Everyone is, in a sense, grandfathered. The only way that they get affected is if they're in this existing position, and after this gets approved, they decide to go to another position. Then they would have to accept the qualification requirements, the minimum qualifications, college, two-year degree, four-year degree, all the training certifications. They'd have to accept those responsibilities and accept a new pay grade. So that's what they have agreed to. And in turn for that, they've asked for a five-year contract, and we support that five-year contract, which is five, 4% raises.
Thank you.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Item C.
B.
Sorry, B. Approval of AFSCME Local 3717 restructure agreement. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Go ahead, Jamie, finish up this one.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioners. So we talked about this just a little bit ago in terms of the negotiations. So what we had done is we had been working on this... So what we had done is we had been working on this probably for about two years with the Local 3713 on this restructure concept. About halfway through, they had a change in leadership, so we kind of started a little bit more from scratch. But again, countless hours in meetings with Local 3713 and district leadership to try to come up with something that was going to work for everyone. Again, 3713 was great, trying to be creative, tried to work with us to get to where we are today, which was, again, taking the 50 job descriptions that they had in the Local 3713 down to 18 multitasking job descriptions. What you have in front of you today is 15 of those 18 job descriptions. We are finalizing the final three job descriptions, which I will bring to PPNI and then District Board in the next couple of months. But again, this reflects the 15 multitasking job descriptions, which was, again, the goal to, you know, do more with less, as we've done in all the other units. So I don't know if there are any specific questions about the job compressions.
Questions? If not, Commissioner Salimi.
Yeah, at the PPNI meeting, I believe we, was Commissioner Currie asked that we look, that you tell us which ones are new, totally new job descriptions, which ones are remodeled or refashioned job descriptions, so.
Sure, so I can address that. So items number under C, that's the list of the actual job descriptions. Items one through items 15 are actually the 3713 job descriptions, the 15 that we are bringing forward at this point. Of those, there are two new job descriptions within the Local 3713. It will be a control systems tech. It does say new next to that title. And then the other one in the bargaining unit that will be new is the entry-level engineer, which is also noted as new. The remaining three job descriptions that we have on here are exempt and excluded jobs that were being redone. Specifically, the accountant was kind of in connection with the 3713 negotiations. That is a new E and E position, and the procurement specialist is also a new position.
I know when we were at PPNI, both you and Scott talked about this, the entry-level engineer, and how we've managed to sort of, with all of this, sort of improve the, all these positions. And in that one, we added a requirement that we didn't have. Scott, maybe you can just explain that to folks, because I thought it was really good, and I think everybody should.
Yes, thank you, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So, so, as Jamie mentioned, as part of any union negotiation, when you have a job scope that the, the union feels is theirs, you have to negotiate that out, right? So not only are we negotiating what the union's employees are doing, but the last three that's on this list is to make sure that the union supports the fact that these three jobs will not be union, right? So that's an important part, point. What Commissioner Salimi is talking about is, this is just another example of what we're trying to do more with less. So as an engineer, every engineer that I hire, that we hire, we're hoping that that engineer will someday be Susan Agreli. Now, not everyone's going to be the Director of Engineering, but we still want the potential for that employee to be the Director of Engineering, or the manager of Engineering, or an assistant manager of Engineering. So, so as an engineer, the first hurdle you have to pass right out of college is to take a test called the EIT, Engineering Training. As Commissioner Salimi mentioned, the EIT is even harder, in my opinion, than the PE exam, Professional Engineering exam. And so if we hire engineers right out of school, presently, before approving this tonight, the entry-level job at the MDC was about $90,000 out of college, with no EIT requirement. So you hire an engineer out of school, you hire them for 90 grand, in 10 years, they're making 130 grand, but they never got the EIT, and they never got the PE. So that person cannot ever, ever, ever be Susan Agreli. So we invested all this money in succession planning, when the person that we thought was going to be successor to Susan, or one of the management staff, cannot be, because they can't get their license. So what we suggested is, with the union, and the union supported it, you have to come in the door with your EIT. Now, most kids in college take the EIT in their senior year of high school, senior year of college. And so it's not uncommon, it's not an unrealistic, unrealistic ask for them to walk in the door with their EIT, because now we know they've got the potential to get their PE, right? So those are the kinds of things that we did in this contract. And that's just one example of what we did. And so it's, you know, we're trying to make, we want to know that everyone that we hire can, can be our future, right? Can be our successors.
Thank you, Scott. And I thought that was worth talking about.
Okay, we're getting ahead of ourselves, we're into, okay. Questions on item B? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Item C. This is amendments of job descriptions, which we got into in the last one, but Jamie, why don't you get into that? Let's, before we do that, recommended action is receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Well, you mean each one of them is separate? Yeah. We're going to consolidate all of these into the motion that we just made, without objection.
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, without objection, we will consolidate all of the changes in item C. Is there, go ahead, Jamie, you want to?
Okay, again, thank you, Commissioners. Sorry, I know a lot of these conversations are overlapping a little bit, they've been very connected. So these are just the actual job specifications that we, are the final product of all the negotiations. So what you have are, again, the individual job specs, in addition to the actual agreement that we signed with Local 3713, which shows which jobs went into the new 18 job specs.
Okay, questions? Without, Commissioner Patel.
Once again, through you, Mr. Chairman, this was approved unanimously at the PPNI level.
Okay. Further questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Item 10. Bureau of Public Works, consideration of potential action regarding Town of Berlin Cost Sharing Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Demming Road Pump Station. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Who's going to take this?
Chris Levesque, yeah.
Chris Levesque, okay. Chris?
Hi, good evening, Chris Levesque, from the MDC. The board may recall, this, this was discussed a number of times in a number of meetings, as well as Bureau of Public Works. So the MDC and the Town of Berlin share use of a Town of Berlin pump station on Demming Road. Previous discussions was, how do we go back and repay some previously unbilled, uninvoiced O and M expenses that we shared? So in 2020, the discussion was brought up, and we did come to an agreement, we did go back a number of years within our statute of limitations and resolve that. This portion is with respect to our agreement that we have with the Town of Berlin. So any capital expenses to improve that pump station, we share cost. So within this agreement, we defined through a number of flow metering exercises that we did with the Town of Berlin, leading up to this agreement. So we determined that the cost sharing was about 70 to 30%, 70 MDC. So we discharged from areas of Rocky Hill to the Town of Berlin's Demming Road pump station about 70% of the flow that it discharges. The other 30 is coming from the Town of Berlin. So this upgrade to this station will be conducted this year. It is a Town of Berlin's pump station, so they did put out a competitively bid contract for, a contractor did, was a low bidder. We did involve our finance team and procurement team in that. So we did have a lot of say on to how the contract was constructed, as well as bid, reviewed. We also did review and provide a ton of information, background, and input into the overall design. As the Commission probably knows, we operate about 90 wastewater pump stations, so we have a lot of experience in this area. So we were able to take our lessons, learn our standard practices, and help the town's engineer through the design and provide that critical input. So moving forward, we're looking for approval to enter into this MOU on the cost sharing. And the details on this will be essentially semi-annual payments over the next five years, and they're all fixed cost payments. And that is based on the overall contract value, plus contingency, it's written in the agreement. Ultimately, if we don't use all of the contingency, there'll be a true-up on the 10th and last payment of what the reduction is. So this is the, essentially the terms that we agreed with in the Town of Berlin, and then looking for the board approval moving forward.
If I remember correctly, 2020 dealt with water, not with sewage.
It was, we, 2020, we resolved prior to coming to the board. We, so we have shared customers. The Town of Berlin share, provides water for some of our customers within Rocky Hill. We also provide water for some of their customers in Town of Berlin. So it's similar to what we were discussing with Cromwell earlier. This is, that, the water side was resolved, but what was, sort of took a while to resolve, we ultimately resolved it, was the past O and M expenses. They were looking to go back, I believe, John, was around 1980, and invoices not passed on to the MDC. What we ended up agreeing to was going back to, I believe, about 2014 or 2016.
We went back six years, under the statute of limitation.
Yeah, I believe it was about 2014. So we paid those invoices up to date. We had, we went through, thoroughly reviewed all their O and M costs, and came to an agreement on that payment. Since then, we've been up to date, we are still waiting for their O and M costs for 2022, but for 20, for what we paid in 2022, for 21, O and M expenses, around $42,000. So we're expecting that invoice to come from Berlin for our review, and ultimate payment for 2022 O and M expenses. What we're forecasting after this project, and during this project, the contractor will actually be bypassing the pump station, so they should have very minimal O and M costs in '23, based on the contract being executed and the contractor being there. But coming out of this, we expect the pump station to have much less O and M associated with it, and we're projecting around $20,000 a year of MDC expense for that pump station moving forward.
Commissioner Patel, you had, and then John.
This being a jointly-owned station, how do we share the liability in case of failure?
Chris?
Any difficulties in the future?
Yeah, so it is the Town of Berlin's responsibility to upkeep the pump station. So ultimately, any other capital improvements, long-term projected out, we would have the same cost agreement, because it is in our original agreement. But any upkeeps, as far as on an annual basis that are O and M-based, we reimburse them our percentage at the end of the year. One other thing to mention as part of this project, we will be updating our meter infrastructure, as well as the meter infrastructure leaving the pump station. So we should have essentially a real-time basis for that percentage of our contribution for the O and M costs moving forward.
Follow-up question, Commissioner, Commissioner Patel.
Partially answered the question. Question is, in case of failure to perform the services?
You're talking about liability.
And the customer, client, could blame somebody or sue somebody. Who will they sue? Are we partnered with it? Whatever the percentage owners we are of?
Chris, can you address that?
If it's, if it's a function of a failure of the system, that we've contributed 70% in this, in this pump station, so assuming a failure of the pump, the pump station, you're not going to be able to attribute, you know, that failure to be one party's fault or another party's fault. It fails, it fails. And improving that or getting that repaired is going to be a 70/30 split, just as you have now.
Yeah, and it would be under the direction of the Town of Berlin, since it is their asset, it's their infrastructure.
In that case, do we have ability to examine or, or at least check the station every certain period of time? Is it in our schedule?
It would be. I don't know if it's a schedule that's specifically laid out in the agreement, but because we're a partner with Berlin on the improvements, they may own the asset, but we're a 70% partner in terms of the, the cost, we would have a right to inspect, both during the construction phase and after.
During and after.
Correct.
If I may, Commissioner, so, so the Town of Berlin has a, has a liability to operate the facility. We're not there on a daily basis, their job is to, that's why we're paying 70% of capital and 70% of operational. So their job is to execute, right? So if they do not do something that causes a failure, our argument would be, it was a lack of, of their...
Oversight.
Oversight that we're paying for that caused the failure. So our position would be the liability, depending on the circumstances, but the liability would be with the Town of Berlin. If the pump fails, you know, the system fails at no fault of the operator, then we would have that share 70/30%.
Commissioner Gale? I'm sorry, it's on the same issue. Commissioner Gale?
Just to add to that, paragraph 11 of the MOU provides for indemnification for just those circumstances that were pointed out. If it's their fault, they have to indemnify us if somebody comes after us.
Thank you, Consular. Commissioner Apodiden?
It's just a, whoops, just a quick question, and that is...
Are you hooked up, John?
You had.
Is the light on?
You're on.
What kind of mechanism is in place? Because I'm already hearing that we're waiting on the bill for 2022. What mechanism is in place that we don't miss, like they did for the last 20 years, that they don't send the bill? And number one, number two, and we forget about it, which happened, and number two, if there's any override on the construction that they're doing, you know, are we there looking to make sure that we don't, because we're going to pay 70% of the override, right? If it goes over the budget?
Yes, so, Scott Elson, so we have the right to inspect, we're, as part of the construction, we, we have the right to inspect the construction activity, to make sure that that exactly doesn't happen. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, but in 2016, we, there's, we've done a lot of things internally. A lot of these little agreements were sitting somewhere up in engineering, or in maintenance or operations. And now we've centralized all of our contracts through the district clerk, so there's more than just one entity within the MDC that's looking out for this. We can't, as you said, we can't rely on the other entity to call us, right? So we've, we've got more than one department focused on all of these contract, contract obligations.
Thank you.
Further questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, you're in favor. Okay, that passes. Let's see, item number 10B. 712 Cedar Street, Newington Sanitary Sewer Encroachment. Recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Public, who's, who's doing it?
Michael.
Mike.
Mr. Currie.
Mr. Currie.
Manager of Engineering.
Manager of Engineering.
Yes, good evening. This is a, well, I'll just start by saying, March 1st, the Bureau voted in favor to, to allow an amendment to their prior approval, so that Gold Coast Properties, the owners of 17th Cedar Street, give them more time to execute and to record their approved encroachment agreement. So they're looking for an additional three months. Any questions?
Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Very good, Michael.
That's good, Michael.
Eleven, we've done. Commissioner requests for future agenda items. Yeah, we just, we did eleven.
Oh, that's right.
Initially, we moved it up in the, in the process. If not, opportunity for general public comments.
My name is Alyssa Peterson. I'm a Hartford resident and MDC customer. I came to the annual meeting last year and got plenty of questions answered from your advocate and your true employee, Ms. Allen, over here. I also came about five months ago with concerns about the ethical conduct of one of your employees, James Sanchez, relative to his lobbying on behalf of the MDC's published interest in closing Brainerd Airport. I wish someone had corrected me and said Sanchez was not employed at the time and out on workers' comp. Many here know I don't mind being corrected as to the facts of the matter. Two weeks ago, I emailed two of your Commissioners regarding the same MDC employee, and numerous allegations I had received, including that Sanchez had been out on workers' compensation for nine months, was simultaneously being paid for work as a city councilman, and also working as a candidate raising funds, attending meetings, going door-to-door. Other allegations were that he's been accompanying Mayor Bronin at functions during the day, working in his council office, flying to Puerto Rico to work on the family property, or vacationing in Florida. I know I've seen him at council meetings either virtually or in person, and never once had a clue he was injured or disabled. Last week, Sanchez was apparently standing in stormy weather, waving and greeting voters for fourteen hours on Election Day. While I will attach my prior letter to a new letter and forward them formally to your Mr. Myrtle, here are some of the questions that will need answer. Would something like this constitute a federal campaign or election finance violation, as in paying your employee to campaign during a workday for a state seat that now includes the MDC in its district? When will the MDC demonstrate immediate transparency when there are serious accusations regarding a commission member, vendor, or employee? When will Mr. Sanchez's workers' comp claims come before your internal committee? Is he possibly requesting a disability pension, which would prevent any future employment as a state representative? Pursuant to statute language, it doesn't appear he qualifies or is currently eligible to serve as both an MDC employee and state rep. And finally, I have not been witness to these criminal allegations of workers' compensation or campaign fraud, but I'm willing to do the dirty work yet again to try to clean up after another dirty Hartford politician. So with that in mind, I'll formally ask you in writing how you handle allegations of workers' compensation fraud. Is there a hotline, an email address, an investigator? Because many people have information and want to share it. Or should I just launch another one of my political websites, asking for any tips about this alleged fraud and probable other past fraud at the MDC? Seriously, the greater Hartford region is tired of this agency and its various negative headlines or its cover-ups. I hope I will receive some fair and decent answers to the letter I will submit. Thank you.
Further comments? If not, the appropriate motion is, motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?